Okay, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corvale City Council to order December 22nd, 2020 via Zoom. Roll call, please.
Pastor Foster.
Present.
Gross. Quinn.
Present.
Dodd.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members, Les Mitch Gross, who we expect to be joining us at some point are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and several other city staff. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
It moved by Goodrich.
Second.
And seconded by Foster. All in favor say aye.
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 The agenda is approved. Item four is citizen comments. Is there anyone either in the in City Hall or via online that would like to speak to us tonight?
Yeah. And forgive me my pronunciation, Bree Horstman with South Slope here today.
Hi there.
Hi there.
Thanks for having me. So I'm the business development manager at South Slope, and I try to get around to the city council meetings of all the communities that we serve. It's been a little challenging this year. And so this virtual thing is sort of working out, I guess, here at the end of the year. But basically, I just like to introduce myself to those that haven't met me, provide my contact information, which I can share, you know, via email with someone that can get it to you guys. And just to see if there are any questions or feedback, you know, for South Slope, we do want to make sure that our community leaders are staying in touch with us, letting us know if they have any questions, providing any feedback that they're hearing from the citizens. So I guess just to ask that, and then just to share additionally, that we also do offer grants and scholarships. And one of the grants that we offer, we do a matching grant through Aryan, and that is for up to $1,500, and then South Slope matches an additional up to $1,000, and that is to any nonprofit within our service territory. So I just kind of like to remind our communities of that, you know, we have been able to do some really cool things with those grants. I know, you know, we've done some defibrillators and some other really cool things. The only thing I will say is it's not able to be used as your your regular funds, it has to be used for some tangible item, so or items. So that's just something to keep in mind, but I do like to remind everyone of that because I know, especially this year, it's been really tough for a lot of our nonprofits. So that's pretty much all I have to share. I'll share my contact information out, and then so you all have it in case you have anything. But if there's anything top of mind, feel free to share that with me. And otherwise, I'm just checking in to see how things are going in Corvaleville.
Oh, well, thank you, Bree. Yeah, when you share your contact information, share any information you have on that grant program as well, please.
I will, thank you.
Certainly keep that in mind. No, you know, for the areas that you serve in Corvale, South Slope, I hear very good comments about the service and the quality and so forth. Of course, I hear a lot from the other residents across the community where you're not able to service as of now, and why can't we have South Slope too? So that's that's the double edged sword. You do a good job where you're currently invested in, and we just encourage you to continue to spread across the community if that's in your plan, so.
Exactly. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Okay, well, thanks for checking in with us, Bree. You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like, so.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Are there any other citizen comments?
No others today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will move on to the mayor's holiday proclamation. I thought, given that this is just three days before the Christmas holiday, and we've celebrated many other holidays, recent religious holidays and otherwise, in the last week or two and coming up, that would be appropriate to tonight for me to issue a proclamation and express some, express the appreciation to our community. I'm speaking on behalf of the council. I hope the council doesn't take any umbrage at that. I think you'll agree that it's well deserved. So let me just read the proclamation. City of Corvale employee appreciation. Whereas the holiday season is upon us, and the 2020 year is nearly over, and whereas it is appropriate to reflect on the unprecedented and challenging year it has been for everyone in our community. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic, civil unrest, and derachio have impacted all Corvale City employees in unique and sometimes difficult ways. And whereas citizens, business owners, and workers, visitors, and the mayor and city council have depended on city employees in every department to serve the community in often atypical ways. And whereas the community, along with the mayor and the city council, have always appreciated city employees, and the year 2020 has certainly been one when we don't want to mask our appreciation. Now therefore, I, John A. Lundell, mayor of the city of Corvale, do hereby recognize the service, dedication, and sacrifice of all Corvale City employees during the past year. And further, I exhort all citizens of Corvale to join the city council and me in expressing gratitude to our wonderful city employees, and wish everyone happy holidays and best wishes for a wonderful 2021. Sign this 22nd day of December 2020. So, thank you to everyone, including my colleagues on the city council, and especially to all the staff that have really stepped up this past year and done everything we've asked them to do. And and I'm going to give a special shout out to Lori Goodrich because she helped me polish this proclamation. So thank you, Lori. Any other comments? I believe there'll be some further employee appreciation in the works over the next day or two before the before the holiday break. So again, thank you to everyone. I'll sign this proclamation right now. And we will move on to the business at hand. Item number six, which is the Iowa River Landing Parking Lot 2021. This is a resolution studying a public hearing on the plans and form of contract and ordering of bids for a project that will construct 141 stall parking lot for use by the adjacent Stabridge Suites and top floor condominium units down in the Iowa River Landing. This public hearing will be on January 12th, 2021, which is our next meeting, and the bids are due on January 19th. Don?
Resolution setting a public hearing for the plans, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the Iowa River Landing Parking Lot 2021. Introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
The resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number seven is the Coral Ridge Avenue Improvements Phase Two. There's two items here. Item A is approve a pay estimate to Peterson Contractors, which accepts the construction of street and infrastructure improvements on Coral Ridge Avenue from Oakdale Boulevard to Forever Green Road. I'd entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number 26.
Moved.
Moved by Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Believe that was Foster, no, it was Jill Dodd, I believe. Your face came up. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, no, okay. Pay estimates approved, all ayes. Item number two, the second item, is a resolution accepting the improvements Phase Two as completed. Don? Are you muted, Don? Hey, Don. Don, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, he's gonna get a job.
Goodbye. Did they hear that?
You repeat that, please, Don.
Resolution accepting quotations and approving demolition services agreement for.
You gotta do the one before that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Resolution accepting the Coral Ridge Avenue improvements Phase Two is completed, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes. Item number eight is demolition of properties at 309 and 309 and a half, Seventh Street. These would be the demolition of the building and the slab that they're built on, which were purchased by the city last year in anticipation of planned work in this area. Quotation report, please.
Yes, the city received one bid from its solicitation. The low bidder is CHA Enterprises in the amount of $6,767.75. The city has used this company to do numerous demolitions over the last number of years, so we recommend approval of that bid to CHA Investments.
Thank you, Kevin. The resolution, please.
Resolution accepting quotations and approving demolition services agreement for 309 and 309 and a half, Seventh Street. Introduced for adoption by council member, when seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item nine, Resource Enhancement and Protection Fund. This is approving an agreement with the Iowa DNR for what's more commonly referred to as REAP funding in the amount of $125,000 for the 7.6 acre purchase for the park and fen protection acquisition project in the Westland use area. Don?
Resolution approving an agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for grant funding via the Resources Enhancement and Protection Program. Introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by when? Any discussion?
Mayor, I would just add that this is our, there was an error here on my first sentence in my memo, I apologize, but this is our third grant year in a row to acquire, this is going towards acquiring land in the Westland use, as you'd already said, and we are working towards making this purchase here in the spring, and working towards putting together for several different landowners and several different pots of money to put together about 100 to 120 acre new park for Corvaleville.
Terrific. Thank you, Sheri. This was Sheri Proud, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Any comments from the council? Roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross. Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
I believe Mitch stepped away, so it was approved, all ayes, Gross absent. Moving on to item 10, Clear Creek Mitigation Bank. This is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Impact 7G regarding the Clear Creek Mitigation Bank. This is a project that we've had a couple of work sessions discussing about doing some environmental work along Clear Creek at Corvaleville. Don, the resolution, please.
Resolution approving a professional services agreement with Impact 7G regarding the Clear Creek Mitigation Bank. Introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by when? Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that the staff has been working on this, as you have also had discussions about it for the two different meetings. We are in the process of applying for an SRF state revolving loan, state revolving fund loan, a planning and design grant, and that will give us funding for a three year time period to do this type of work. There's no interest and no principal payment until you roll it into permanent financing, and it would be the hope that at that point, we would have sold some of the, of the, we would be, excuse me, would have been able to sell some of the credits so that then we can just fund it back with cash. But that's the process of where we're at, and Tony was filling out that application yet today.
Thank you, Kelly. Any comments from the council? Roll call, please.
Oh, Foster.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item B is a resolution to fix a public hearing for the same project for a loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed $2,500,000. The public hearing will be on January 26th, our second meeting in January. Don?
Resolution fixing a date for a public hearing on a loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed $2.5 million. Introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Any discussion? Roll call.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes with Gross absent. And finally, similar project, setting a public hearing also on January 26th for a proposal into one or more loan agreements and to borrow money they're under for this project. Don?
Resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on a proposal to enter into one or more loan agreements and to borrow money they're under in a principal amount not to exceed $2.5 million. Excuse me, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any questions or discussion?
Just to be clear, these, we would not be borrowing loans. These are two different options of a repayment process, and so this is one that we're working with the SRF on in regards to which one seems to make the most sense, along with our bond council.
Thank you, Kelly.
Um, I just have a quick question. What was the date on those hearing before, before we set a resolution to change the dates?
I don't, I think this is the first time we set the public hearing.
Yeah, this is the first.
Okay, it said the date changed, so I was just, I just want to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
Nothing else, we'll have a roll call, please.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Moving on to item 11, Community Development Block Grant Program. This is also set up, setting a public hearing for the review of the status and funded activities for the student support and NESS programs during hybrid learning in the Iowa City Community School District. This public hearing is, will be set for our first meeting in January, which is January 12th. Don?
Resolution setting a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Housing Fund Contract Number 20 OT 081, Status of Funded Activities. Introduced for adoption by council member, when seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes with Gross absent. Moving on to item 12, the Iowa River Landing Retail Lease. This is a resolution addressing a five year lease agreement with the option to renew for one additional five year term with cookies and dreams for unit C 104 in the Iowa River Landing District. The public hearing for this project would be on January 26th, our second meeting in January.
Resolution of intent to dispose of an interest in real property and soliciting alternate proposals for the leasing of unit C 104, IRL Part Two Condominiums, Corvaleville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Questions?
Can you just clarify where this will be, which space this this business will be occupying?
Yes, this would be the space that's in front of the expansion on the sleep store. So it'll be, they expanded in the back half, and this would be in the front half, the street side of that space.
Awesome, thank you.
And not to get too technical, but the the resolution includes the setting of the public hearing? The, it was mentioned in the comment that the public hearing is on January 26th, but I didn't see anything in the title of the resolution.
Yes, the the public hearing notice is actually in the resolution also, which you're proving.
I figured that was the case. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Foster.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item 13, I consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar A through T inclusive as presented.
Okay, motion by Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
By Foster. Roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodd. Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution approved, all, the consent calendar is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Okay, moving right along to item number 14, City Administrators Report.
Yes, just three quick items for you. First of all, I would just like to note that before our next council meeting, John Heinz that runs and gets all of you on the TV and has that, works on that part of the World Force and does a great job, he will be getting married on January 2nd. So would just like to congratulate John, and he'll, that will be coming up here very, very soon. So congratulations, John. Also, would just like to note that this was the 40th anniversary of the Isle of Lights, and so thank you to all the residents and people that put together different activities for the event. Thank Jim Goodrich and Lori Goodrich for the Bebop's Train, that was a big hit here at City Hall, and Sheri Proud and Megan were over in the park, and so there was just a lot of fun things that people were able to do during this pandemic time, and it's nice to have some activities like that that people can do safely. And just would like to wish everybody a great holiday coming up.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate that. Marriage Report, relatively brief for me as well. I hate, I hate to start off on a sad note, but I think it's very deserving that we, as we oftentimes do, that we recognize the passing of long term, long time farmer, former Corvale employees. And this past week, John Clear passed away. John was a bus driver and supervisor in our transit department for over 25 years, and just was a really sweet guy that was very well liked by the public, and we send our sympathies and condolences to John's family and thank him for his service to the city. Other than that, just to tell people that because of the way the holidays fall, you don't have to worry about what day to put out your garbage, both this this week and next week, that both weeks, or the week of New Year's, both weeks, just put it out on the day that you normally would. So we'll make it easy this year on you for that. And just a very happy and safe holidays to everyone. I've enjoyed, I always enjoy working with my great team on the city council and the great staff, and it's, there've been some times this year that haven't been the most fun, but that's just the way it comes. It's the same way for everyone, and we're all looking forward to 2021, and I'll see you back next year. City Attorney's Report.
Well, at the risk of sounding repetitious, I would like to also wish all you online and those watching a Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy New Year to everyone. Kevin?
Yep, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Stay safe out there. The light is at the end of the tunnel.
Thank you from the City Attorney's. Committee and council members reports. In no particular order, let's see who comes up first. My screen at the top, Jill, you are number one.
All right, you, Mayor. We had Parks and Rec Commission last night, and we have already started going through all of the budgets for all of the different areas of the Parks and Rec Commission. They would like me to extend an invitation to you, Mayor Lundell, and to our City Administrator, Kelly Hayworth, to come in January. They would like your input on what the economic climate is, looks like, and the budget process, and what will happen with some of the projects going forward, if if they're going forward at all. And they understand and are very cognizant that the next couple of years are budgeting are going to look a lot different for Corvaleville. So I will extend that invitation to you. We have, we'll be meeting by Zoom, so it will be safe. Congrats to John Heinz. I did not realize that your wedding was coming up, so that's pretty exciting. And other than that, I'm wearing my Merry Quarantine shirt, so please gather in small groups and do all of those good, smart things so that we can keep our numbers down, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, Jill. Well said. Skipping over Mitch, because I don't believe he has joined us, next up is Lori.
I want to extend my well wishes, good wishes to everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and look forward to seeing everyone in the New Year. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. Over to you, Megan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I want to start by saying congratulations to John Heinz. That's wonderful news. I, I think that John has just been a tremendous asset to our city staff. He's, he's just been fantastic, and I've really enjoyed working with him over the last, it's been a year and a half that we've had John on our team, so congratulations to him. I also wanted to say thank you to everyone that came out and enjoyed the Isle of Lights. Thank you to Sheri and the rest of our city staff who helped plan some of those wonderful activities. And thank you to Lori and Jim Goodrich for sharing their wonderful train collection with the community and and creating a new community tradition for us. Jude loves coming to to see your trains, and so that was, that's really fantastic that we have that to celebrate and to enjoy. I also wanted to say thank you to the Corvaleville Food Pantry staff, including our colleague Hi, and the volunteers and the community partners for helping pull off an amazing community meal. I, it was cold, and it was raining, and it was snowing, but we did not let that stop I, I, uh, it was cold and it was raining and it was snowing, but we did not let that stop us, and we served over four hundred, I'm sure Hi has the exact number, but it was well over four hundred meals, um, in a, in a new, in a new way, and that was, it was just so great, and I, I wanted to give a special shout-out to our colleague, Hi, because she is, she, if, if you've never seen her do her, work her magic at one of those community meals, it is just, it is just incredible, and it is, she is so passionate, and she is a gifted chef, and it is just, it is so cool to see her in her element. She is so passionate about, um, the power that food and, and a good meal has in bringing people together, and, and, and she, she really deserves a lot of praise for her work on, on those community meals, and, and the food, the food was incredible. It was just, it was fantastic. So I was so happy that we were, um, able to pull that together and that the staff at the Food Pantry ma- made that, um, happen. We're so appreciative. Um, and then, just, you know, finally, like everyone else, happy holidays to everyone, Happy New Year. It's been, um, a tough year, obviously, but I am so proud of, uh, all of you, all of my colleagues. I'm so proud of the city staff for rising to these challenges, and, you know, it's, um, you, you, when you are in, uh, public service, you, you have to take the good and, and the challenges that come along with it, and, you know, I, I, it's an honor and a privilege for me to serve this community and, in the good times and in the bad, and I just look forward to seeing what, um, what the, the future holds, and I'm looking forward to seeing twenty twenty-one around the corner. So happy holidays, stay safe, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Megan. Hi, hi, I'm very glad it worked out that you were going last, because it's, it's very nice that Megan, uh, made those very generous and appropriate comments, so, hi, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, uh, I feel like I'm gonna repeat everything that everyone said, but, um, you know, during this time of year, uh, that, that's okay to repeat those things, right? Congratulations to John Heinz. I know that I've only met you once, um, and because of the circumstances, we've never actually have time to get to know each other, um, but, uh, regardless, I, I want to offer my gratitude to you, um, on getting married soon, and, uh, I want to thank, uh, my colleague, Mr. Mayor, and city staff for guiding me and for their compassion, for their, um, patience, when it come to helping me navigate the role. I know that this is only my sixth, uh, council meeting. It's someday, you know, someday is feel like ages ago, and someday it feel like it was yesterday that I'm stepping on for the first time, but regardless, I, I am learning every day, and I am thankful for, um, you, all of your patient and all of your help. It's definitely, you know, make the, the, the steep learning curve, uh, less intimidating, for sure. And I want to encourage everyone to shop local. I know that, um, Christmas just around the corner, and not everybody celebrate Christmas. For my family, we don't celebrate Christmas the way that is traditionally celebrate, but we do use the time to gather together with family and friends, although this year that gathering's gonna have to be, uh, postponed, and we're just gonna check in with each other online, you know, uh, virtually, but I would, um, encourage everyone to shop locally. You know, our, our local business need our support more, now more than ever, so just whatever, last-minute shopping, instead of hop onto Amazon, um, you know, check out what we have here in our community, um, and then, yeah, stay in your quarantine bubbles, because we all want to get back to normal sooner rather than later. I, just like all of you, want to get back to noble, really, really bad. I am a, a, a people person, so it's been tough for me, but, um, if we all do our part, we should be able to, um, gather soon. And just echo on Megan, and thank you for, um, the tie words, but the community being, the community meal, um, last Friday was a huge success. I would never dream that it would go that well. I mean, you know, when you plan something, you obviously wanted to go as well as possible, uh, but under the circumstances, I said, if one person showed up, that's success. And over four hundred and thirty people showed up, and we served every single one of the people who are patiently waiting in line. I know that some, uh, left early because they just didn't have the time to wait, and, um, you know, I, yeah, I could not ask for better support, and I could not have done it without the support of my team at the Coralville Food Pantry, all of the volunteer who, you know, just jump in headfirst and willing to do whatever we ask of them, um, and it was snowing, it was raining, it was icky outside, it was crazy, and I know that car wrapped around the block, uh, all over the church. Um, we had a couple of police officer, you know, show up and say, what is going on? Even Sherry Proud, she, she got in line, and then she, you know, she, she give a car down to the station and said, hey, you want to get up here and see what, what, you know, what they need help with? But, um, yeah, I, uh, I'm looking forward to more. I don't know when it's gonna be more, but, um, hopefully, next time, I invite all of you to participate and see what, uh, what community get-together is like. So, um, I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday, and see you all next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Hi. You're a great addition to our team. Appreciate it. Okay. Unless there's any final words of wisdom, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Foster, seconded by.
Second.
By Quinn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned. Um, I propose we just take a minute or two to let the technical staff get things set up, and then we'll go right into the work session and, um, get done.